I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reminder that you have your phone, if you got it on. Also reminder that this is being recorded. We've got a work session for January 31st, 2023. Melanie, any additions or deletions?
I have one deletion, OHA agreement 16958-10.
Alright, first up is Patty Martinez with OHA agreement 173139-4.
Good morning.
Good morning.
How are you?
I'm doing well, how about you?
Good. Mind talking to us a little bit about this amendment?
Sure. So, so as a community mental health provider, we all, we are required to provide mobile crisis services 24/7/365. And we are doing that and have been doing that for quite some time. The way our mobile crisis works is that every month, we have our staff that signs up for a number of days to be on-call. So, our folks work their normal everyday schedule, they work 40-hour week, and then they rotate working evenings, weekends, holidays. They get paid stipend to do that, and then if they get called back, of course, you know, they get overtime essentially because they've already worked a full-time job. So historically, in the six years that I've been here in Lakeview and that I've been here with the Lake District Wellness Center, it's been the same way. It's one person that takes the on-call phone. If they get a call from the hospital, or dispatch, or even individual, if they go through the crisis line channels through protocol, and reach our on-call, they will either talk to them in a crisis, a lot of times with our Christmas Valley folks, because we're so far away and can't respond quickly, and probably even safely. We spend a lot of time talking a person down, seeing if we can do a safety plan, talking to the officer that may be on-site, to see if he can, he or she could remove any weapons or medications, and get an agreement from the person to stay safe, and then follow up with mental health services in Christmas Valley the following business day. If that is not possible, and they are out of that realm of safety, we ask the officer to transport the individual to the Lake District Hospital, where then we can see them face-to-face and evaluate them, and then either place them on hold for their own safety, or arrange for services and make sure that we do safety planning. The individual who is on-call does have backup by a supervisor throughout the night, so if there are any questions or complications, they always have a supervisor that they can reach out to, which at this time is me. And so, like I say, that works for the Christmas Valley, that also happens here in Lakeview. Sometimes we do get a call where we can have an opportunity to talk to somebody over the phone before we, you know, have to take them into the hospital. The state really prefers that we not always be taking people to the hospital. That's been a little bit of a challenge in Lakeview and of course, Christmas Valley, because we don't have a lot of 24-hour resources where we can meet with a person. When I was on the mobile crisis calls, when we were trying to kick off kind of this new system through the state, I would get a lot of feedback, you know, from people saying, "Oh, just go out with the CIT officer," or, "Oh, you know, a lot of times Starbucks is open 24/7, and you know, you could sit and have a conversation with someone there." And I always had to explain to the others in our work group that we didn't have those kinds of things available here. One thing that is a positive, and I'm hoping we'll be able to start using this very soon, is that with our burn grant, we have opened up a small temporary drop-in center. The burn grant is going to allow us to get a larger permanent drop-in center where we can deliver services. Right now, we're using the apartment at the corner of the Wellness Center, and right now, we're holding some skills groups and some socialization events. It is my hope that at some point, dispatchers will be able to bring an individual to the drop-in center to meet with a crisis worker. So again, we don't always have to be utilizing the hospital, which I know is what the state wants. The main difficulty that we, and I wouldn't really call it a difficulty, but what's happening right now is that the state is beginning to ask that our mobile crisis teams be teams of two, and sometimes three, to include a peer specialist. At this point, we are not really in a financial situation to be able to pay three people to be on-call every night, especially when our crisis call volume is very low compared to some of the larger cities throughout the state. So we continue to have the one person available, and then like I say, if safety has been looked at, we can start seeing people at the drop-in center as well.
I know it's always been a challenge of not wanting to have to take these people to the hospital, you know, the patients, trying to keep them out of our emergency rooms has always been more of the goal.
Right, right. And of course, the challenge has always been where, you know, where would we be able to see them other than the hospital? So like I say, the utilization of the drop-in center, I think, will be very helpful, so long as, you know, I can plan around security. So, for example, if we feel someone's, if we know someone is violent, we will ask them to be taken to the hospital because room 107 is secure. But if they don't appear to be a danger, hopefully, the officer can bring them to the drop-in center, meet the crisis on-call person, and the officer could stand by, you know, until we've done the assessment, that would be greatly helpful. So that's what we're working towards.
This is for the financing of community mental health addiction treatment, recovery, and prevention and problem gambling. I see a couple of spreadsheets on here, what's the total amount? Yep, is it the two spreadsheets together? Is that what it is? See, one says 66, the other one says 80.
I think on page 15, it brings into the mobile crisis intervention services, and that's MHS 25A. And that's what we're kind of looking at today, and that's the, the main amendment.
Is it a dollar amount?
Well, that's what I was trying to see on the spreadsheets, I'm imagining the... I don't see it. I see on the first page, I, I'm looking at some of the problem gambling dollars. But then you go over to the next page, but that has a subtotal, it has a total and everything else at the bottom of that. But you go over to page 21 and 23, and you have, at the bottom of that, you have community crisis services.
The numbers on my spreadsheet here are barely readable.
Yeah, they're, they're not easily readable.
Same, but I know that through, through OHA, I believe we get 52,000 by a biennium for mobile crisis. And I know that we're working on some changes to that, asking the state for more money. They're kind of implementing this, this kind of new kickoff for mobile crisis, although they did this like three years ago, but we're kind of doing it again, not really sure why, and nobody really tracked it from before, because I've asked about the proposals that we put in before, and nobody really kept track, so. So we're kind of at this again, kicking off the mobile crisis team the way the state wants it to be structured, and discussing the amounts of money that they can give. Right now, I don't have any solid answers on that.
So I see page 22. Kind of a tall amount there.
About 271,000.
Right, for all those service elements that's listed?
Correct.
Yeah, which the crisis services, like I say, is one, and I can't read that number.
Yeah, I think, yeah, there's several line items on community crisis. One is about 6,000, the other is about 19,000 with some change. And then NI crisis services, what would that be, NI?
NI?
That's what it looks like, NI, it's the very bottom of page 21.
NA.
Is, is it NA, well, I'm not NA, but it says NI on mine.
NI, Chris, yeah. NIC or RC?
I, I do not know what those initials would say.
So, Patty, when you guys are, have somebody on-call, do you have somebody in North Lake on-call also?
No, it's just the, the folks in Lakeview, we get all the calls, and so Christmas Valley calls the same number.
And so, do you have anybody from Christmas Valley on your mental health answering the phone calls? The reason I'm asking is because in the last five months, we've had two suicides in North Lake. And so, I just want to make sure we're providing the same services up there.
Well, like I say, we don't have like a staff member on-call waiting to answer a phone in Christmas Valley. The number goes to the same phone, and then we answer, and then if there's something we can do with a deputy to ensure safety, or have the person brought to the hospital. I, I'm aware of the suicides that we've had in Christmas Valley, and, and it's heartbreaking, and I know that, I, I know that that community is really in need, and we are really trying to provide those needs. The individuals who did commit suicide were not involved in our services, and I don't believe reached out in any way. I wish they would have, and you know, we could have at least talked to them, or you know, got some services going for them. But as far as, you know, Christmas Valley, we are expanding our staff. And so maybe in the near future, we'll be able to kind of rotate some of the on-call up there. The problem is I only have one QMHP in North Lake, and you know, so she can't do crisis 24/7, so, so it does come to us. Starting today, I do have a QMHP going to the North Lake School, and we'll be doing school-based services weekly there now. You know, we're trying to get that going, and we do have mental health staff at the high school here in Lakeview. So, we are, we are expanding our services, we do have more staff in Christmas Valley than we've ever had before. You know, and like I say, we're doing the school-based services, and if I can get some more staff hired, if I can get more therapists, more QMHPs, then we will also...
What is that? What's QMHP?
QMHP is a qualified mental health professional, so they don't necessarily have their licensure through the state, but they usually have a master's degree in psychology or a like field. And so as they're working towards state licensure, they're registered through MACBO as a QMHP, and they are allowed under the OARs to respond to crisis, to do crisis intervention, to do therapy, to do assessments. Then we have QMHAs, which are qualified mental health associates. They do not have a master's degree, but they are authorized by the state to assist with crisis intervention. They cannot do assessments or diagnose, but they can help in a crisis, and then a QMHP just has to sign off on, you know, what they said, and then the QMHP has to make the diagnosis for, for a crisis assessment. So we have QMHAs, QMHPs that are doing the on-call. The state has also been talking about having peer support specialists being available. So again, if and when we get to a point where we have the staff and we have the, you know, financial ability to pay extra people, then we will also have peer supports that we can call through the night, or you know, through the day, whatever may happen, to help in a crisis situation, to help stabilize an individual.
Thank you. Very good. Any other questions? Anything to add?
Nothing to add.
Thank you for being here today.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, we'll move to Kevin Hawk. First up is Safety Improvement Science from Lakeview County.
Morning.
Do we have anybody online?
Uh, yeah, I do see them.
I was just seeing if we had somebody online.
Oh. You want to talk about science first?
Sure.
So, oh, wait, I was about to say, I had to make a copy of this because my darn scanner won't read the label. So, I brought you guys a bunch of copies. I think you've probably all seen this before. This is a drawing, you want that for the record? The actual drawing recommended by the engineer for the signs that you're looking at on the takeoff, on the lists or the quotes, to make improvements for, at this point in time, all these locations are in North Lake, Fort Rock Highway, Christmas Valley Highway, and Old Lake Road at 90-degree corners, or curvatures in the road that have some crash data. This signing will hopefully advise the driver of the actual corner itself, or road condition, advise his speed, and minimize some of the traffic issues that we have at those locations. Kind of was looking at this corridor of Fort Rock Highway specifically, because in the event of this solar development, I'm sure that this, you know, these roads will be utilized by a population of people who aren't from here, so maybe not used to...
It's possible.
The speed and the 90-degree corners that section runs. So in this case, we put out for quotes, because these signs were, you know, purchased all at one time greater than 10,000. The lowest quote came back at $11,108, traffic safety supply.
And you'd have to still put them up, correct?
Yeah, we haven't, we haven't pulled the trigger yet.
No, I mean, this quote doesn't include installation?
No, we have, that's correct, yeah, there's the cost for in-house for us to put them up, yeah. I'll have, I'll probably have two employees. At some points or some locations, we might have to have three, when we might actually have to set up a traffic zone and flag it, so depending on where we are. And maybe what time of day, or that kind of thing, I don't know, traffic count.
And then there's also the removal of...
So the, so yeah, the other signs that are existing, there are some signs that are existing that still have some value of retro reflectivity, so we'll bring them all back and evaluate them, and the ones that we can keep or utilize to replace like from another incident or somewhere else where somebody else shot a sign, or, or it needs to have a, an upgrade, we can utilize them again. The, on this quote, there's longer bases, you'll see. Most bases come 18 inches, but at several locations up there, the sand won't hold a sign that's six and a half feet in the air because of the wind and so forth, so these bases, that's why we purchased all new bases. The ones that are in the ground might not be in exactly the right location. If you look at that drawing, it's going to give very specific measurements so that everything is uniform, so that the end user, which is traffic, will see the exact same thing at every single site. And the uniformity of it being the key to advise the driver. So there's longer bases there, there's bigger posts, and then a little bit heavier rivets. The, the wind in some of those locations will, will literally pull them right out of the ground.
Because they're bigger signs too.
Yeah, these, some of these are bigger signs, yep. Yeah, some of them are 30, 30 by 30, it says on that drawing maybe what the sizes are too. You have 30 by 30, 36 by 18, so the large arrow signs are 36 by 18, that's a pretty good chunk of aluminum to be hanging out in the air, so. I think those bases are 30 inches or 36 inches, so they'll hopefully stay a lot longer.
How many corners will this take care of?
So, on Old Lake Road, the one that's south of town, there's signs in this quote for the S-curves to the west of Christmas Valley, Buffalo Wells, and then there are four locations on Fort Rock Highway that are all identical curvatures. So seven, seven different locations. And then, once we get these installed, and looking forward in our budget, I'll continue to have other safety improvements for different districts as we go through, because we have these 90-degree corners all over, in Flush and A-Allen. We'll evaluate them by the daily traffic, West Side, all those locations, and upgrade them as time and budget allows. So we'll continue to do them in somewhat of a cluster, kind of like we do our, our seal code operations and all the rest of our maintenance.
Because you have a bunch on the West Side and New Idaho.
Yeah, and if you, of course, I, I pay attention to as many of them as I can when you see them. A lot of people drive through and they don't, they may not recognize that some of them aren't as uniform as they ought to be, with sign spacing, warning ahead, and that kind of thing. This, this is, as per the drawings, I guess, the most proactive that you can be with signage prior to a curvature in the road and the advertisement of what we believe our recommended speed should be, or the advisory speed. Some different locations have different advisory speeds, and so we'll evaluate that as time goes on, but to try and get them to be as uniform as possible. So the lowest quote there being $11,108, and then we'll move forward and get them, and we'll put them up soon as we will.
What funds this, let me come out?
So, these dollars are in a sign light item that's in our budget. This was, we previously planned this, we actually had it planned in our budget along with the speed limit signs that you guys have heard me talk about, but I still have no information back from ODOT on the actual speed study through the actual town site of Christmas Valley. So I think I put, I don't have it in front of me, but there was 45-some-1,000 dollars for certain sign upgrades. There's a historical maintenance, you know, dollar amount that we put in our budget because of replacing vandalism signs and ones that are sun-faded and all that kind of thing. But these dollars, and then along with those signs, I'm not sure that that is going to happen though before this coming next budget, so I'll have to include that in the next one again.
Yeah, just roll that over.
Alright. Any other questions, Chris, or?
No, for me, sounds good.
Let's go on.
The second item that I have here for you is utilizing a brand name, the Single Source Contract Rule Number Eight. It is a zipper asphalt head for the zipper milling machine that we have. Don't confuse this with the van wing machine, this is a separate asphalt machine. We've utilized this machine quite a bit for the reclaim that we did for the flap grant on East Bay. We've been utilizing that a lot for all of our paving notches for the improvements that we've made up there in Christmas Valley and on Christmas Valley Highway. And that original grinding head is, its life, its, its life expectancy is up. So we welded on it as much as we can, we've had the guys, you know, armor it with AR plate where we can, but we need to, you know, have that be our backup on, on pallet, so that we can use it if we need to, and we need to purchase this head. This is the, this is the heaviest duty, if you will, armored asphalt head that's available for this piece of equipment that I have. So, and this was actually part of my equipment purchase in the budget as well. I guess I should note that we're purchasing this because we have, and we will have, reclaims that we will have to plan in the future, so want to be prepared for that when it takes place, whether it be through a road use agreement or through our own planning and upgrading of, of our road systems.
Sounds good.
Okay, we good? Okay. Good.
Thank you.
Cheers.
I think I'll go first.
Yeah, I just wanted to hear it, that's all.
Hands up.
Good morning, good morning. So, while Kevin's here, he wants to hear the budget calendar.
Okay.
Couple things to do tomorrow in the meeting. We need to appoint a budget officer and also approve the budget calendar. So I reached out to staff and budget committee to see if our budget meetings for the 8th and 10th of May would work. It seemed like everybody was on board with those two dates. That is a Monday and a Wednesday. So it'd be the second week in May, Monday and Wednesday. Because of our recent union contract, and using an earlier date for CPI, we tried to push this calendar back just a little bit, so we have the best information available to us, taking into consideration those contract negotiations with the February CPI date. So what, what this looks like is we would review assumptions and like talk about goals and methodology on March 14th. That CPI date is going to be right, right around in there. Packets would be distributed to departments on March 20th, due back to my office on April 17th, and then meetings on May 8th and May 10th. Once you guys approve this, I'll make sure I get it out, and maybe mail it to all the department heads and elected officials.
Okay.
And the budget committee.
When's, uh, when would be a good deadline to have all information to you?
It's that April 17th.
April 17th.
And as we, I mean, it's always best if I do get it then, but you know how it goes. I mean, I'll, I'll be getting information on, well, the Friday before the meeting on May 8th, I'll get information on May 5th. But if we can get it by April 17th, that helps with the whole documentation and editing, going back and forth, and making sure we have the best information for the meetings.
But you're going to be looking at goals and assumptions by March 14th?
Mm-hmm.
And the 8th and the 10th, sorry, the 8th and the 10th is actually the presentation days that we're looking at.
Yeah.
Okay.
So Barry, we're hoping that works, I know you don't know quite yet, but...
It, it worked.
Okay, good. And Mark, it works for you, right?
Yeah. I don't remember what happened last year.
Well, this year, yeah, I think you moved it for an appointment on the Thursday or something. We were going to do Tuesday and Thursday meetings, but you had something.
I'll have to look it back at one.
Okay, we're, we're going to hold you to this, May 8th and May 10th. And then I don't know, I mean, I think everyone in the room could be a budget officer, so you guys can decide who you're going to, you know, pick on that. Just draw a name out of the hat, I'll help them, they can do it, be good, good experience for someone else.
There's going to be one name in the hat.
What's, what's the timeline on the budget committee's service? Is everyone good to go this year, or is anyone up?
I think, they're, they're staggered, so they do three-year terms, so every year, someone's term is up. And I'm trying to remember if it was...
It must be two weeks.
One, one of them was up and they're like, no, I'll, I'll do it again. And we, I have a C and R making a response, so I'm, I'm not sure, you have to, it's printed on the budget book itself.
With 33% chance.
Yeah.
Take, take swing at it.
Those are good batting averages. So I, whoever it was, we even looked at the minutes, and I think they, I thought there was even a mention in the minutes, but they, they okayed, okaying another term, I can't remember who it was. So same, same group that has a lot of experience, and I think very broad knowledge about county operations, but also very, you know, I just, I feel like they stay at a pretty high level of, of looking at the, this budget as a whole, instead of getting down to nitpicking and a, you know, macho, so. They're a good, good group, for sure.
Investment policy?
Investment policy update. So in your, I think your packet's pretty good with, with this topic. Our new advisors, GPA, one of their services they provide is to review our investment... our investment policy, offer recommendations, talk about it, and then if it's significant enough, help us through the Oregon Short Term Fund Board review of our investment policy as well. So in 2019, I updated our county investment policy to allow for the Oregon Intermediate Fund, which is available through the treasurer's office. Um, that's the last time I've updated or changed anything to our investment policy and the last time I've actually brought it to you for a review. Technically, anytime we have maturity past eighteen months, we're supposed to review our policy annually. So GPA's done a fantastic job in your documentation there. They provided a memo that kinda outlines and highlights what, what is changing from that 2019 policy. And it looks like a lot when you look through the redline version, but what they're doing is preparing for the Oregon Short Term Fund Board Review. And so they moved a lot of the formatting around to meet what their latest standard and what their latest sample policy looks like. And so there, there's a, there's a, like four different things that updated our policy. And number one is that organization and format content to match their sample policy. Number two, which was fantastic, was to include detailed descriptions of allowable investments. So even though we're not changing what is allowable, we're giving more documentation, more information on what a banker's acceptance is because it's not, it's not real common. We don't do it very often, but if someone wanted to look in our policy, they could go, oh, that means it's short-term credit investment created by a non-financial firm and guaranteed by a financial institution. We don't, we don't do that very often. Now we'll have an advisor and a team that maybe will enter into that, but we have the definitions right here in the policy as well. Then, this is the, probably the biggest, um, change for this investment policy is we are moving, if, if you agree and approve of this, we're moving maturities, maximum maturities from three years to five and a quarter years. Um, so at thirty-six months, you know, there's a lot of things available to us, but given the size of our portfolio and how long we're hanging on to some of our reserves and some of these dollars, we might, um, with the disciplined strategy, see better returns if we go out to five and a quarter years. The standard used to be five years and that's kinda what everyone saw as five years. But the markets are changing enough that we could miss out on an opportunity with something that matures literally maybe sixty-one months. And so we don't wanna hamstring ourselves with this policy at five years when it's not that big of a difference to add just three more months on that and, and, and have more things available to us as far as investment products and things like that. Um, again, again, you know, thi- this is the policy language. Once, once we're on board with the policy and agree to that, then, you know, we go into what that looks like as a portfolio strategy. So, so given that we have the availability to stretch out to five and a quarter years doesn't mean that everything we've got is gonna be sitting out there at five and a quarter years. Okay, there's, there's going to be a ladder and, and kinda different duration, almost like they call them maturity buckets. So that's, that's the next part of the, um...
Libby staggered too?
Yes. Yep. So then they also updated minimum, um, minimum, rating minimums and percent allocations. The minimum ratings of investments kinda changed depending on the rating agency. There's, oh, there's standard and, where is it? Standard and pores and movies and fitches and, and all, all of them kinda give some different, um, you know, we, one might call them triple A, one might call them A plus. And so they, they kinda updated that and tied that all in with those rating agencies and what, what, that we wanna stay, um, high, high ratings. So we just updated that language as well. As far as that, so this memo's great. Back to the maximum maturities, it also talks about constraints, which these are minimums of the portfolio. So where we used to say twenty-five percent of our portfolio would mature under ninety days, or there was twenty-five percent or six months of estimated operating expenditures. Now we're saying that twenty-five percent will be under a year. But still, um, that's, that's like the minimum. It's probably gonna be higher than that, but that's the minimum that we would allow to mature in less than a year.
And ten percent in under thirty days.
Under thirty days, yeah. Which our pool is, is literally matures every night. It, it's daily liquidity. So, um, that's, that's where the majority of our dollars will still sit. But, uh, this is the constraints that GPA will use as they're investing for us and monitoring for us. Their software is so, um, detailed that they use this portfolio and policy, put it in our account, and then they can see daily, oh, we're getting close to this, this policy benchmark, you know, or this constraint, need to make some changes or, you know, they just can watch it very easily with all of their software.
So, uh, how does this affect your role?
It makes my role so much easier.
I see that we have a lot of lines to...
Well, so as far as, back to the policy, the policy nuts and bolts itself is really not changing. Um, we're going out to five and a quarter years, we're updating the ratings and we're adding in, you know, those definitions. What my role, how, how my role has changed is now instead of getting multiple dealers and brokers authorized through the county who have read our policy, who've agreed to our conservative approach, who, who are very schooled in state law, I have a group, a staff with the advisors who have a whole list that they themselves have made sure adhere to all of those requirements. And so where I would, you know, go through the whole process to find a broker dealer and maybe have two or three options, and then you're only limited to what they have available to them as far as a security or investment, just, they just broaden it out tremendously for me. And then they make it all happen. I'm not having to...
Go through each and every one of that.
Yep. Yep. And, and make sure that the, the prices and the bidding is, you know, correct and, and all those things. They're kinda doing that on our cap and we're paying them for it. You know, we're paying them not only to help with the policy and make sure that we're staying in compliance and reporting and software, but to, you know, make all of those purchases for us, keep us, um, disciplined in our strategy so that we're not too risky, but maybe can see a little bit, um, higher returns over time than the pool.
Other than making your life easier, it'd be very interesting to see with us paying those guys and what the difference is gonna be at the end of the, the time period compared to what it would've been.
So right now, like, like the pool just changed their rate to three point seven five, um, last Thursday or Friday. Like the three-year treasury note, I think, is trading at like four twenty. So just on treasury spreads going out three years or more, we're gonna do better. That's given this environment today, though. It, it changes so, so quickly. And the pool is really, really great. I mean, as far as overnight liquidity, getting a return for your dollars, it has served the county really well. What, what this team will be able to do though is go out a little bit longer. The pool doesn't even really go out quite so long. Um, this policy and this team will allow us to go out just a little bit longer.
So you, you, you mentioned, you know, overnight liquidity. I, you know, I'm interested a little bit pointed out. I see a lot of red lines in this document and things have changed. But under liquidity on page four, I see you've taken a few things out, but one of the things that you added is that, um, a portion of the portfolio also may be placed in the Oregon Short Term Fund, which offers that next day liquidity.
Yeah.
So at least with a portion of that portfolio.
Always.
What's the portion that you're looking at, you know, for that next day liquidity?
So Ian, the portfolio strategy, there is a page there that talks about, um, the difference between what they're calling the core and liquidity. So right now we have a total portfolio of about thirty-three million. That is higher than average because we're sitting on federal funds. Okay, so basically, you know, we're probably about five million more than, than usual. We're between twenty-four and twenty-eight million.
Still have some market dollars.
So we have market dollars, yep, we're sitting there. So their recommendation right now, which I, I felt comfortable too, was fifteen million in liquidity and eighteen million in core. So we're about forty-five percent of our overall, overall portfolio will be still sitting in that Oregon Short Term Fund.
Correct. Okay, alright.
Okay. We unpaid, and this is a clarification, we pay them for our overall portfolio though. At first I thought it was the core. It's going to be the total. And after further discussions that made sense, we need them to look out for our liquidity needs as well. If they're just focused in on what, what they can make off of a core portfolio, there starts being that, that kind of almost, you know, conditioned pressure to increase the size of that core. We don't want, we don't, you know, that, that core, um, our liquidity we have to protect.
Right.
So, and, and this is the recommendation and, and the portfolio strategy right now. Every year we will review this. Every year, you know, we'll re, update the policy if it needs updated, at least review it, and then every year look at the portfolio strategy and that is one of the things we'll talk about.
As we should.
Yes. How much, how much are we comfortable in a core, which is, you know, up to five and a quarter years. Doesn't mean all of it is, but, you know, some of it will be, um, how much do we need in liquidity to meet next twelve months of capital projects, operations, things like that. I can do this a couple different ways and I have done it in the past, um, looking at what we set aside in reserves or a budget. To me, that's a good guide. If we're telling the public, we are not spending these dollars for the next fiscal year, you're, you're, you're in essence saying there, there's a core chunk of money. There's a core portfolio sitting there. We're saying we're not going to spend it for the next year. So, um, tomorrow, Rashad from GPA is going to call in at ten thirty. He's going to have a, a little bit of a, a slide presentation that goes through both the investment policy updates and this portfolio strategy. I told him that if you guys had some questions or comments or concerns from today's discussion, that I would kinda shoot those to him so he could, you know, answer tomorrow during the discussion. So if you think of anything, you know, just let me know.
Well, we have some numbers in front of us or we just be talking?
So the, the next, the next, uh, part of your packet is called the portfolio strategy.
Okay.
That's where the numbers, you know, once you agree to that the policy, you're okay with going five and a quarter years, then the strategy comes into play.
That's what I was wanting to see.
Okay. And then, you know, they have used our information for page five of that strategy, the monthly balances. That's what I was talking about, how, you know, we're usually in the twenty-four to twenty-eight range. We're sitting at, you know, thirty-three million the last couple months, um, taxes, and then also market dollars. And then on page seven is this, this recommended range for what they're gonna say is a core and what we would say we wanna stay liquid. So right now they show that, like, we're a hundred percent liquid right now. Like I said, I can access those dollars overnight. So what we're, what we're saying here is let's, let's, um, given, given right now the, in the straight environment, we can go a little bit...
It's a small...
Oh, is it on? Oh, okay, I see.
I was wondering if Ann didn't print the backside of the input.
Oh, shoot.
No, it is in here.
Yeah, okay, alright.
Okay, so another, another spot to talk is this, see, it's page twelve of this, but how you're talking about like different, what it looks like to stretch out five years. And so on page twelve, they talk about the duration band. And so they would say like, um, what that zero to three, um, US treasuries, you know, minimum of year. Let's see how this is, let me look at this. So zero to five years, you still like, what, if you're going to go out that, you can see the allocation on the side. Like if you're going zero to five, you almost have somewhere around the neighborhood of twenty percent in every like year going out in five-year durations. Zero to three, you might have, you know, in that one to two-year mark, a little bit heavier. This, this actually doesn't tie right to like how we would roll out dollars, but they're giving an example in an overview of what, um, what those buckets could look like. Just to show too that we're not, we're not gonna be all out in five years.
Right.
You know, nothing in years one through four, you know, that's going to be laddered, staggered through that. And he'll talk about, he'll talk about that tomorrow.
And his name is Chad?
Rashad.
Rashad.
Rashad. He, uh, presented to Kern County, I think, last week. Remember, there was quite a few counties and, um, cities and school districts that GPA is doing services for. So this is the time of year. They really do have to kinda go around and, and talk about investment policies and, and strategies for the coming year. So they, they're, they're pretty polished and pretty good at what they do. I'm excited to have them on board. It's...
How long is it, how long have we had the...
We just moved it, not that long ago.
No, we just, we just entered into this contract, I wanna say, in November, maybe.
Yeah.
They... They, um, well, and I, I'd known that they had created this group. Dan Woodbridge had created this group a while ago, but I wasn't sure of all the services that they provided until they reached out to me after the treasurer conference in September. And then, once I realized what their fees were gonna be and what services they provide, the experience they have with their team. Garrett Cudahy moving from the state to GPA was pretty significant in my mind. You know, he was the one doing the, all the trades off the desk for the Short Term Fund Board. And so to have him move from the state to this group was, said a lot. So, um...
Ian, be good?
Yeah.
Forward to that tomorrow.
Yeah, I'm excited to have him on board. They were wanting to, so I, I kinda signed off on this portfolio strategy earlier, but then they wanted to make sure, you know, let's, let's wait till we get all the policy stuff approved and then kinda start making investments for you. So they haven't started purchasing anything for me quite yet. So after we give them the green light, if we do tomorrow on this policy and strategy, then they'll start looking at purchases for us. Um, just in terms of, of the other process steps, like I said, the investment policy, after you've approved it with any edits or changes tomorrow, it then goes before the Oregon Short Term Fund Board. And it sounded like then their next meeting that we could get on their schedule might be in April. And what they do is just act as an advisory. So you gentlemen are the, the, you know, you have the authority, but they're going to give you advice on, you know, well, this policy meets our, our standards, but you might wanna, you know, think about this or think about this. GPA, as our advisors, will be with us through all of those steps. So it's kinda nice to have. Because I had to go through the Short Term Fund Board on my own when I extended our maturities for the Oregon Intermediate Fund. And it, you know, it's a little bit of a grueling process and, and they, um, well, they, they wanna make sure that these counties and cities and small districts have the sophistication and the experience and education they need to do what their policy says, or else don't happen in your policy. So I appreciated how they handled that and what, what their role is. So they are just an advisory group, but the authority still lies here.
Okay.
Thanks.
Fantastic, Ian.
Alright.
Thank you, Ian.
Thank you, thank you.
Look forward to tomorrow's discussion.
Yeah, so I think that's scheduled for ten thirty is what I, if I have that right in my head.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Alright. Next up is Dave and Olive. Come on, finally. Timing is good.
Timing is good. Well, I forgot you guys tied up. Good morning.
Good morning.
So I was before talking about cleaning up, uh, the funding that the counties allocated for the ski area. And there's a lot of different, a lot of moving parts. We originally started out for a three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar grant from Oregon State Parks and Rec. You guys are going to put a fifty-thousand-dollar match on that and twenty-thousand dollars towards a, uh, lift shop expansion, so the snow cap were fit, you know, it's all kind of happened together. We were not successful on the big grant, and we, the Highlanders went ahead and moved forward on the the maintenance repairs, on the lift motor controls, the safety system. And so we kind of reallocated everything, our funding in our directions towards getting those things done, because that was kind of, it was becoming more and more evident that that had to get fixed or we're going to have a problem that we didn't want to deal with, because we were getting a lot of downtime from it. Um, so anyway, in our last public meeting, you guys approved seventy-one thousand and some change towards the Highlanders, twenty-thousand dollars for the, the building expansion and the balance towards a match on that grant in official meeting. And at the beginning, the conversation was you guys are willing to invest seventy-five thousand towards this here and get it going. And so we made that investment. So far, as of this year, we've spent, um, we bought a backup motor. Um, we got a local electrician about eighteen thousand dollars, and the backup for the safety system is about a hundred-and-ten thousand dollars. So we're sitting about a hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand dollars invested this year in the lift. And, um, we also got a grant from Resurs for a rope tow to be put in a spring. And, uh, we've got that project coming forward. And then looking ahead, we still have our bull wheel shiveler at the top to replace and our upper bull wheel bearing to replace, and that's, that will have to be done next year. We're running out of, there's been two lifts now that have failed, the upper bull wheel mid-season, and that's catastrophic. And it goes from about a forty-thousand-dollar repair to a two-hundred-thousand-dollar repair if it breaks. And if no one gets hurt when it breaks. And so that's a big reason why we'd like to get that. We tried to get it done last year, and the company outfit that was going to do it couldn't get it done on a timely fashion. And so that didn't occur. So we still have those projects ahead. In order to do that, whole bearing change and all at the same time, we have to take every chair off the lift, which is not typical. And then we have to do a slip test on every chair when we put them back. And then we have to do another load test with water and the bags and the boxes and stuff to be compliant for an aerial tramway. So there's a lot of summer work ahead of us, plus installing a rope tow. And so the Highlanders are looking, you guys gave us the money for the down payment on the safety system, and we're, and we're looking to get that, the balance of that, what you've allocated for us. And so the question on the table is, is are you guys willing to go with the seventy-five thousand we originally talked about, or do we want to stay with what we talked about in the public meeting at seventy-one? So.
I think the difference here is four thousand ninety dollars. And this is ARPA funds, right?
Yeah, we had, we had some budgeted through general fund, um, which was like thirty-one thousand, but I think that was the original, like, grant and and match to that. And so there are some remaining ARPA dollars.
Does this meet the intended ARPA?
Now that they've opened it up so that it can be, you know, almost like government revenue loss, you know, and it's economic development, so.
So four thousand ninety?
Four thousand ninety, so to make the kind of contribution of seventy-five thousand. So we originally talked about seventy-five thousand, and we came down seventy-one, and everybody was excited, okay, we saved a lot of money, we're not going to go there. Now that we did pick up the big grant, and the Highlanders have stepped up their plate heavily, and I think we've had good season, and we're making money, I'm not saying we're not. I'm just saying, to to get a, to finish out this completion and getting a lift in a position where we want to have it safe and operational, it'll take us another twenty years, we still need to spend about another fifty thousand dollars this summer. And besides your other projects on this sort of little grant. Other two grants, actually, the rope tow and the parking lot and faulty toilets and expansion.
So those other grants that you're talking about, are you expecting the county to match those?
No, I think the Highlanders will be able to do the pull-up of a match on that. I'll be talking with Mark at the state about that.
Okay. Well, I know it's a full parking lot Saturday night.
So we had a very successful, uh, night ski operation again, and we operated three nights. First night had a good attendance, the last two nights, we packed the house. And, uh, there's, snow conditions have been better this year for night skiing than has in the past. We've seen a lot of ice in the past this year. This cold weather and it's more like more effort on grooming, we've been chirping it up, and we got sugared up. And, uh, so skiing conditions have been a little better than we have. Because we've experienced an awful lot of dry spell winters. Last year, we operated eight weeks without a flake. And we just moved snow like none other, and every day it got warm and it set. And every night it froze as hard as my head. And, uh, this year, we haven't experienced that quite as hard as much. But, uh, yeah, we've had a lot of, we sold a sea, a family season pass last weekend to finish out the season, so. It's been kind of a cool thing.
Well, I guess, you know, what we're really looking at is we're getting people from out of town.
On Saturdays, we're.
It's helping economic development.
We're outnumbered by other people on Saturdays by far, over locals. I, I have some folks from Ben, a man and a younger man. They came down, and they'd never been to the hill, and they said they're never going back to Bashford. And, uh, and I parked next to a guy from Climb Falls, and he was in his fifties, and he's lived in Climb all his life, and he said he didn't even know we existed. And he came over, him and his wife, and he said, he normally skis Ashland and Shasta. And he said, I, he just, they like the hill, they like the vibe, they like the small-town town, you know? So he, he came back twice this last weekend from Climb. So we're seeing a lot of that. We're seeing the bike shop in towns being successful, and the ski road business, which has been helping for them. We've got a few people in the hospital, that's been helping, helping for them.
A few broken bones this year.
We've had some, well, what happens is our, our number, our incidents are low, but now that our numbers are growing and growing, it's just, it's just a casualty of war.
Alright, well, I think we'll probably decide on this tomorrow. Is that fair enough? So in case I have any other questions, Mr. Knowles?
So the question on the table is that, right now, we can fund out the seventy-one nine or we're going to go with seventy-five thousand? And that's, that's the question on that, and how you want to do that. And I'm here to tell you about our stewardship of the funds and the direction we're going and so on. We're not being silly about stuff. And Eric's done a really good job leading the ship and making good decisions. And, uh, we've, we haven't had our obstacles, I'll be the first to admit. The start of the season was really rough and rocky. The kickoff, we were, we would like to go there a week or two sooner than we did, but that's watering the bridge, but we're full steaming ahead and, um.
Speaking of that, though, Dave, with all this other work being done, are you guys scheduling ahead of time so we don't run into that sort of problem?
That will never, ever happen, thank you. We are going to do a little test in the summertime.
We're being recorded, Dave.
We're. Anyway, yeah, I.
Will you do it?
I will, I will promise that, though, because of sad state affairs.
It's, it is.
It is a combination of things, it's one and all in person.
So I guess the only question I had is that we know where we're going to get to four thousand then, till finish clearing our heads?
I think we can use ARPA, some of the, some of the ARPA dollars, the county's ARPA.
We have some miscellaneous dollars there.
Yeah, okay, sounds good to me.
I'll take it, or a big bank at all, or economic development or anything else.
Well, that's what I was, the only other thing, I was thinking was the economic development.
We can, I mean, we can, I don't know what all is, um, committed from that, those dollars either, so. I guess we have a couple of options to look at.
I'm pretty sure we have room for four, four thousand ninety, but yeah.
Okay. Anyway, I appreciate you guys' support, the takes, ability to make this happen. There's a lot of people involved up there, making us go around and around. It is part of our community in the wintertime, and it does create a great. I ski until Friday, school's out, and we have about eleven kids up there, and that's a good place for them to be. And we just finished our school program, our ski lessons program, that's been amazing. Barry's very involved in that, we've seen forty, fifty kids up there participating in that. You know, it's just been really good. We've got a high school ski race coming on the eleventh, Ashland Central Mall, for a fun day race. We hope to have a sanctioned race up there next year. Our ski team's kind of getting their feet back on the ground and headed in the better direction. And that'll bring more people, the word from my kids over there in Ashland, they're excited about coming back over to our canyon again, so. All positive.
Good.
Alright, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Dave. Alright, our next subject is a museum board application. And it's from Gerald Stewart. But I've also got an email from Jake Collins saying that we had another application, Jean Headland. So I haven't had a chance to talk to Marie. And I don't know if this gives us a choice or if she would want to add to, but I think there's only one open right now, so. Do you have anything to add to that, Millie? I'm just kind of looking at you, like, I didn't know if you knew about Jean, so.
I did not know about Jean. Um, Gerald responded to the newspaper, um, advertisement that they were looking for a board member. He has spoken to Marie, and she would love to have him as in a committee member. Um, I have not heard on the other applicant, though.
Okay. So if you guys don't mind, let's not vote on this today either, and hopefully come back with some information from Marie.
Okay.
Uh, to help with tomorrow's.
That's fine.
Uh, next subject is agreement for Oregon Enterprise Zone extended abatement. So everyone's good on the twenty-five percent? Solid for those next two years?
Yes, so the, the town's going to have to sign their agreement, which I don't know if they have. I know, I heard that they did, but I don't know if it's confirmed. Um, I met with Greensy Mint's, um, financial folks last weekend, a Zoom call with Larry Holt's gang and Denise. We did change the document from the original that Denise sent over because she had Eco Materials Technology, which is the parent company, but they filed this agreement under Greensy Mint. And so we wanted to make sure that, uh, we have the agreement with Greensy Mint and filed the actual, uh, Enterprise Zone paperwork to be the same.
Okay.
That was the only change. It pretty much states they, they met the requirements for the Enterprise Zone, well, where they'd have zero payments the first three years and twenty-five percent of the later taxes on year four and five.
Well, this is an excellent step in the right direction for this potential company in Delaig County. And, uh, certainly helps the, you know. So the town's on board, we're on board. Greensy Mint's on board.
Yep, if Greensy Mint's happy, I'm happy. They didn't argue or anything, it sounded like, on the twenty-five percent.
They were totally, totally happy.
Yeah.
And so. So this will go to their board of directors after the financial people give them the lowdown. And once the board of directors accepts it, then it's a done deal.
Alright, we're, we're done with that subject. We're down to liaison updates. Does anybody have a liaison update for Lake County?
That was my liaison.
I sent you guys an email, uh, actually during the meeting, just forwarded on to you on a road use agreement from Obsidian. It's their draft, kind of red-line document of some changes that they would like to see made to the RUA that we've already adopted as our standard, and some additions. One of the additions is going to be referencing dust abatement. They wanted to include some language in there that re, uh, pertaining to the dust abatement plan that they were forced to adopt through NEFSEC. And so just for your guys' consideration, I, I was fine with with stuff like that, but some of the other language, I feel like I'm just going to step back and let Obsidian do, um, make any arguments for any additional changes, because we've already agreed upon and adopted an RUA. There was a caveat, you know, that we would allow for changes, but any changes to those, that RUA, would have to come before this board. So I spoke to Obsidian this morning, their attorneys, and they were agreeable to just coming before us in the work session later this month, or later in February.
I'm, you and Kevin and Paige spent a lot of time on that.
We did.
Road use agreement. And if we make changes, and the very first one, that's opening the door to people being able to edit and, and I just.
Well, I, I understand.
I think we need to stick to our, you know.
I get it, I, so Obsidian also helped me a tremendous amount too.
I, I get that, but no matter what, Obsidian's going to be looking out for Obsidian.
Correct.
Any company would.
Which is why I was only going to, my job was to look out for Lake County. So I did not take all the original things that they intend, they wanted me to take into consideration. I looked at the document as far as, you know, what was best for Lake County. And I said, look, I, I think we've gotten this agreement to as close to something we can agree upon as possible without putting these people before the board. If you guys want any additional changes, you're going to have to make that argument to us as a body. I, I understand, and that is exactly what these things will be. These will be changes that they feel protect them. And that's, that's perfectly fine, you know, we don't have to accept those. But I want you guys to have the document in your hand for a good three weeks or so until our next meeting. What is it, the twenty-first, I think, is our next work session of February?
It's supposed to be the fourteenth, fifteenth, that you and I will be going.
You and I will be on, so.
And we need to kind of talk about what it is.
Right. Yeah.
We can definitely have a special session if you guys want to.
We could, yeah, I kind of thought that we were just going to postpone it till the next, the following.
I definitely want to be on Zoom or face-to-face.
They said they would be here in person. Whenever we have our work session, they said they would come and be with us in person. And we can definitely do a special session if we want to. So I was just giving an update on the RUA and our conversation that you and I had had yesterday.
Oh, yeah.
If there were additional changes that a developer, any developer, would like to make, whether it be pertaining to a NEFSEC requirement or any additional, you know, exhibits, they have to bring that before the board.
Oh, yeah.
But because we've already adopted our draft. If they want something different, they have to bring that before us and make that argument.
Yeah.
It's not my job to make an argument for them. It's not my job to make an argument for them, so.
No, I think that's what they were asking to us to do.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
So anyway, the other, while we're still on liaison updates, of course, Commissioner Schulenberger and I will be gone in DC. I have a meeting in Portland with the director of BLM and he's also pulled, I, I think actually Todd may be there in person on the 7th, along with a few other folks. And they pulled a few other agency people into the meeting. So we'll see where that goes and that, my conversations with them are going to be largely around the, this potential concept of a land grant from BLM to local ownership, so.
Appreciate you pursuing that meeting. I think that'll be a, a good one.
It's going to be interesting.
Any help you need, hold on.
Okay, appreciate that.
I did get a, a letter from the county that wanted me to read it at the meeting. And I think I'll, I will. So this is from Ellen Jones from the Lake County Hospital Auxiliary. Instead of reading it, it's two pages. They were thanking Seth Bus for all the work that he did. And I mean, everything that they asked for, Seth jumped right on it. And he then scraped ice off their windows before they went back out. So I just want to give kudos.
Was this something that happened at the fairhouse?
Yeah. The hospital auxiliary. What is that? The holiday fair? Anyways, the whole hospital auxiliary, wanted just to give Seth the kudos.
Excellent. It's good to hear.
Yep.
Everyone above and beyond.
I'll just say that here at 11 o'clock, there's a recycling meeting that we're going to listen to at the town hall. You guys are able to attend.
I was planning.
Kind of important to figure out. Apparently we don't have any recycling down in Lake County. And then today at 1 o'clock, I have my first, it's an advisory group at, for the meetings to begin on Art Sheldon discussion. Where the Department of Interior wanted to, wants to, us to look into either doing a bunch of work between the two refuges or combining them, which would include BLM lands, trying it over to Fish and Wildlife and becoming one big load of refuge, so. That meeting starts today. So again, we're just a steering committee or an advisory committee. But there will be a public meeting here in the near future for everyone to be able to attend and listen to what we've got going on, so.
The 5th and 6th will be gone to AOC and Oregon Fair Association.
I'll be joining you for that dinner, it sounds like.
I'm going with it.
Yeah, Gina and Derek are headed over there. I'll be following up after our executive board meeting.
I'll do that.
Kevin, did you have?
I just wanted to catch up with you guys individually when the meeting is over.
Oh, okay.
Some info to share with you.
Alright.
For the sake. We need to discuss here about what to do about our next meetings because James and I will be gone on the 14th. I might be able to come back. My plane gets in at nine something in Bedford on the 14th PM. And my intent is to drive home.
I don't, I don't think we need to worry about it.
Don't need to worry about the 15th.
I'm going to be still flying on the 15th. I'm leaving that morning.
So just, we just won't have any.
Do we want to, I see that we potentially, do we have?
Oh, crap.
So February 28th is a work session and March 1st is a regular session.
Sorry about my language. Kara has a road hearing set for that day. Maybe Mark could at least take comment if folks show up.
On the 15th? What is the chance I could be here?
Well, maybe.
We don't know if the weather is going to be.
Yeah. It's, it's putting a lot of stress together, but yeah.
Do we want to do a special session on Thursday or Friday?
We could move it Friday.
Or we could, and we could just do it that next week on the 21st or 22nd.
Just have it combined.
If something comes up. I don't have anything besides the road hearing right now.
So who, who's the road hearing one?
It's for a road name.
Road name.
It, it, that doesn't have to be, that doesn't, we could, that can wait a week or two.
Okay, she's already published it.
Who published it?
Kara. So, but maybe we can take comment that day and then we can read it into the record.
Later.
If folks show up.
I'll be here, so we'll figure it out.
You know, folks show up tomorrow for that one.
How about a combined session then?
The next week?
Oh, well, yeah, on like the 20, on either the Tuesday or the Wednesday. 21st or 22nd.
Then we got a work session, a regular session the next week too, right? The 28th.
I don't think we're going to need to.
Okay.
I mean, if, if, we get a bunch of stuff that we need to take care of, we could just have a special session. We could just play by here until then.
So 14th and 15th will be canceled meetings.
Okay. Is that a consensus? Are we, do we have a text if on the, what is it, the 30, or the 28th and 1st of March?
It's a regular planned meeting.
So, yeah, so we're, we're still scheduled for that then?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright.
It's another one of those, just like this month.
Yeah.
Last day of, just want to make sure January, first day of February. Alright, anything else? Hearing that, we'll close the work session.